Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Pennfield Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight's meeting is being video recorded and is also being broadcast live on the town's website, pennfield.org, the town of Pennfield's government access channel 1303, and also on streaming media devices Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire. You can search Pennfield TV in your device's app store, and you should know that it is free. Tonight, if you'd like to address the board on any public matter, there will be specific times to do that. After the applicant is done with the presentation, and we have some questions from the board, we'll check to see if anybody has called in with a comment, which you can do by calling And you can also submit comments or questions electronically through that website, pennfield.org. And then we'll also ask anyone in the audience that cares to speak about an application to come on up and do that as well. So, as I said, tonight's meeting will start shortly with our work session. We'll take care of any tabled matters that we may have tonight and prove minutes, that sort of routine monthly items. And then we will go right into the public hearings. We'll ask the applicant and any representatives to come up to one of these tables and give us name and address. And then the board member that's assigned as lead person on the application will likely walk the applicant through. We have very thorough written applications, as you all know, so there's really no need to repeat everything you've done in the paperwork. But obviously, feel free to address the board with whatever information you like. Same thing with people that we call up that want to comment on the application. We like to point out every month that we think that the town does a really good job of making sure that people in the town and our community are aware that applications are being heard. And we do that so that people can come in and speak their mind, and feel free to do so. The town does that, alerts people to the agenda by posting the agenda on the website, by mailing postcards to people that live or own a business within a certain number of feet of the subject property, and then by having the applicant put a post aside. We've all seen those, I think, right on the property. So you drive by, you say, hey, this property is under review, and if you want to, you can call the town and find out more details. As I said, we think it works, helps us do our job, and we appreciate any public input that we have. Having said all that, I'd ask everyone to rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thanks, folks, and we will turn to the agenda. And the first item, I think, is the tabled applicant -- oh, no, I'm sorry, approval of the minutes from November meeting. May I have a motion on those?
A motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second.
All right. Is there any discussion, any changes or amendments? As usual, thorough job. All right. All those in favor, the motion to approve?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay. Tabled applications. The first one is R G and E. And at the request of the applicant, that's going to continue to be tabled?
Yeah, they're working on some information to submit to address past concerns of the boards, so, but we haven't received anything yet, so.
Can we check with them and see when we might receive something? We've probably had the same conversation last month, Andy, and I don't --
And the month before. Last three months, not that we're keeping count.
I was trying to be a little more subtle than these guys.
Last I talked to them, they said they were planning on having things ready and coming back in January, but I can check with them again.
Could we also consider maybe at some point, if these go long, that maybe they should like repost them, put a sign out front, so that way, you know, because we have two applications. If things have changed, I think people tend to forget about this kind of stuff, and the sign goes away, and they say, oh, it's all done, but really, it's still going on six months later, or five months later, or whatever it is.
I don't know if there's any reason why we couldn't do that.
Just a thought. I don't know how everyone else feels, but.
Yeah, I agree.
Very good point. All right. Well, in any event, I forgot who's lead on this, but I'll make a motion to continue to table it with the direction that we just gave, Andy.
Second.
Oh, now I remember. All right. So a motion to table, and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
The second one is for 1801 and 1787 Fairport Nine Mile Port Road. And once again, the applicants requested us to continue that on the agenda, so table it. Okay. I just attended the other day a meeting of the stakeholders for the Mudd District, and the applicant was represented at that meeting, so I don't know that you need to reach out and say what's going on, because it's pretty clear they're waiting for the possible reworking of the code in regard to those districts.
My understanding is also they have reworked the application. It's currently before the board, and if it goes through as planned and the board approves it, the plan would be, or the intent would be, to withdraw the application before the zoning board.
Great. Okay. For those reasons, I'd make a motion to table.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So let's launch into tonight's public hearing. The first one is the car wash on 1922 Empire Boulevard.
David Cox, P E, Pastoral Associates, 242 West Main Street, Suite 100, Rochester, New York, 14614. On behalf of Royal Wash Development LLC, request approval for area variances under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow the construction of a car wash facility with greater lot coverage than allowed under Section 250-5.7-D2 of the code, less setback than required under Section 250-5.7-D3 of the code, and less parking than required under Section 250-7.7-D of the code. The applicant is also requesting approval for a special permit for signage under Section 250-10.3-A of the code to allow a freestanding sign with less setback than required under Section 250-10.12-D of the code, and two building-mounted signs, whereas a maximum of one building-mounted sign is allowed under Section 250-10.13-C of the code at 1922 Empire Boulevard. The property is currently or formerly owned by 1922 Empire Boulevard LLC and its own general business, S B L number 093.02-1-20. This is application number 23Z-0001.
Okay. And if we could have your names and addresses for the record, and then after you do that, I just want to make one comment, and I'm going to actually ask you to run through the application.
Sure. David Cox with Pastoral Associates, civil engineer.
And Anthony Daniele, owner of Royal Wash Development, the developer here.
Okay. The comment that I want to make, it's actually just to make sure, I gave a copy of the letter to Rick, and I see that you have it. So folks should know that a couple hours ago, I guess by now, we did receive a letter from the owner of Baytown Plaza expressing concerns about the application, and it's pretty detailed. I know you're just seeing it. We've, as I said, only saw it a little while ago ourselves. I don't even know if my fellow board members have had a chance to review it, but it's there. It's in. I want to make sure you have a full and fair opportunity to read that, digest it, and respond to it. So having said that, I guess the other comment I'd say is, you know, the concept, we're all familiar with the concepts of car washes. Royal has been around for a while now and been pretty successful, but you guys are asking for a lot of relief, and that's fine. That's our job. That happens. But I would like you to make sure that you, in your presentation, you know, address the concerns about putting a car wash that can have pretty intense use on a lot this shape and this size, which you've addressed in a lot of your material, but I'd like to hear that as well. So go ahead and have at it.
So just to kind of give everyone an overview, this is the old Taco Bell site. So it is a redevelopment site. Taco Bell has now moved south on Empire Boulevard, so this is, you know, going to be vacant, you know, unless we can get a car wash on here. So, you know, it's a really great reuse site. It's close to Wegmans. So the car washes want to be placed, you know, on major thoroughfares. They rely on bypass traffic, so people out on the road going to Wegmans or going to, you know, the Baytown Plaza, oh, hey, I should pull in and get my car washed. You know, a car wash is similar to like a gas station. It's not necessarily a destination. It's something that people pull in to use while they're going to their destination. So this is a really good location. The Royal Car Wash, you know, has been looking in Pennfield for quite some time. There's Royal Car Wash that's kind of all over in every single town around here. Pennfield is kind of the last one that they've really been trying to get into. We've looked at multiple sites over the years, and just nothing has panned out. So we're very excited at this location and this opportunity. But since it is a redevelopment site that does, you know, have some issues, that you have to deal with the existing, you know, utilities, lot size, configuration, things like that. It is a very thin, narrow, long site, which there's not a lot of commercial developments that could go on this property. It's only .82 acres. It's only 99 feet wide. So you're somewhat limited to the amount of commercial uses that could utilize this property. But a car wash has a very thin, long building, so it does fit well from that perspective. And as far as size, this is not the smallest property. We have some other car washes that are on about half an acre, and one of them is only 60 feet wide. So this is certainly not the smallest by any means. So we are doing that, and then just to kind of walk through just kind of the flow. So the main entrance is off of Empire Boulevard, so cars would enter there, and they would, they could stop and get their car vacuumed first before they went through the wash. If they stopped, they could get their car vacuumed, and then they would continue on. We do have three lanes of stacking, which is just what the, you know, when the Royal Car Washes first started out, they just had two lanes of stacking, and what they found out was okay, except if one of the pay stations went down, and then you went down to one lane. That was, then it would become very problematic. So with three lanes, you know, if one of the station goes down, you still have two lanes. Everything still works fine. So once they went to the three lanes, there really has not been any stacking issues or concerns or anything like that. So this is a unmanned pay kiosk, so you can put in your credit card or put in cash, but the majority of people are monthly members, where they have an RFID sticker, and the gate just automatically opens, and then they can pull through and then go through the wash. If for whatever reason the car wash does lose its power, or there's some mechanical breakdown, there is an emergency exit here where we can get people back out of the lane there without having to go through the wash. And then the cars do enter the wash, and then as they exit, they could exit right back onto Empire Boulevard, or they could swing around and vacuum their car after the wash and then exit the property. So that's kind of the flow of the property. And then I can kind of run through some of the variances. Would you want me to go one by one and take questions, or go through all of them at once?
Go through all of them at once, unless anybody wants to take them one by one.
Okay. So the first one is the side setback here. We have a five-foot side setback where a 20-foot is required by code, and it's very similar setback to the parking. Yeah. So the existing Taco Bell had a drive-through lane right on the north side of the building. So our building's, you know, pretty darn close to where that drive-through lane is, so it's a very similar impervious setback on that side. And by being able to push that building up over into that setback, it does allow those three lanes. You know, if we push the building too far south, then we, you know, would have to eliminate one of those lanes and be down to two lanes, and then there would be concerns of stacking and things like that. So it is a little bit of a balancing act with making sure you're not creating any public safety concerns or anything like that. But as far as the impervious, it's a very, very similar pavement setback is what was previously. Open space, so we're requesting 23% open space or green space, where 35% is required by code. The existing site has a little over 25%. I think it was 25.7 or something like that. So it's just a slight decrease over the existing, and that is, you know, a little bit of a balancing act, too, you know, that if we could kind of shift everything more towards Empire Boulevard to have some more green space in the back, but then you decrease, you know, your stacking lanes, and, you know, there's a balance of, you know, we want to make sure that we're never, ever backing up traffic onto Empire Boulevard. And then as far as, you know, there's also the parking, you know, where if you eliminate parking to create green space, but then you're making the parking variance worse. So there's some kind of push and pull, you know, with the redevelopment sites, we're really trying to, you know, do an overall best balance as far as design-wise and to make the site the best we can. We are making some enhancements to the property. As far as stormwater is concerned, we're putting some underground chambers in and some settlement tanks, so we are reducing the amount of peak runoff from the site over existing. We are also adding in additional landscaping and more landscaping to the property, so we are adding some things that green space, you know, helps. So we are doing mitigation and things like that to help offset that. Number three, the freestanding sign setback, 35 feet required, and we are proposing 15. So that is not out of character at all with the neighborhood. If you kind of like go down the street here, the Midas up here, the sign's around 11 feet, the Verizon's around 18 feet, the existing Taco Bell sign's around 17 feet, and then the ExxonMobil is essentially right on the property line, or maybe even in the right-of-way. So it's very close. So we're right in that range of, you know, pretty much all the other existing signs right in the immediate area. It's not out of character there at all. And then also is green space, too, just to the property to the north, the Verizon there. A lot of the surrounding commercial properties, you know, that all, you know, don't meet that 35% green space either. So we're not out of character with the surrounding close neighborhoods, properties there either. Parking, code is 21. We have 18. The code doesn't really distinguish for car washes. It's just, you know, five per thousand, where a car wash, you know, we don't need 21 parking spaces for a car wash. You know, there's very little people that would come in. The only reason that people would park to like come in the office is if they wanted to get a fast pass, or if they had some issue with their membership or something like that. But it's very, very minimal, like people entering. There's no sales. There's no, you know, they're not selling anything. There's not drinks or food or anything like that in there. So we don't need very much parking at all. It's really just for utilizing the vacuums and then the employees, you know, which is typically two to six employees, depending on time and things like that. So the parking is just, you know, we're providing what we think we need, and we just don't need the 21 spaces.
May I interrupt you there?
Sure.
You mentioned the vacuum spots.
Yep.
Are those included in the 18 that you're --
Yes.
Okay.
How many vacuum spots were there?
So there's 18 total spaces, and there's 10 vacuum stalls here, and then the eight up here are for employees or guests, or people who want to go into the office.
Can I ask another question, Dan?
Sure.
Sure.
Can you just, by comparison, I'm thinking of the Webster. How many parking spaces are in that Webster? Are you familiar with that at all?
Yes, I am. I'm trying to think how many, though.
I'm assuming this is comparable size, that's why.
I think there's probably 12 vacuum stalls, if I had to guess, at the Webster.
I think there might be.
12 to 14.
Yeah.
And how many additional parking spaces?
Four or six.
Yeah, there's not very many for the regular, probably four.
Yeah, so there's probably a total of 16 spots there.
Okay.
Give or take one or two.
The next is the building-mounted signage. We're asking for two building-mounted size, where one is permitted by code. There is a small -- So kind of on the middle of the building, the long side, there's a sign here, and then on the exit side facing Empire Boulevard, there's a small sign here. So those would be the two signs that we're requesting. We're well below the max allowed square footage, so, and then as far as, you know, character of the neighborhood, Verizon, McDonald's, Exxon, Laser Wash, all those properties in that immediate area have multiple building-mounted signs, so it's not out of the ordinary or out of character with the neighborhood for that. And that, yeah, that sums up the five variances.
So you've done a good job, at least in my mind, of pointing out the similarities between the current, well, is Taco Bell still open? Does anybody know?
I don't think so.
If they are, they're closing. I believe --
Wait, tonight?
Well, I believe, yeah. I believe they are.
Going on a sale, Dan. Hurry up.
Yeah, I heard they were closing in January, so I don't --
All right. Well, in any event, the use that's there, it's been there for a while. You know, it's a narrow drive-through. You've done a good job of basically saying, what's been there has the same sort of variances that you're requesting. But I just want to ask you a couple of questions about that. You know, I live right around the corner, and I screw up with the directions all the time. So I guess immediately north, or maybe it's east, where the Taco Bell drive-through was. Okay, that's good. Whoever put that up, thanks. So is it north, Andy? Is that?
North is straight up.
Yep. Yeah. So now that's like an entrance to Baytown Plaza, right? You can drive right off Empire, so drive past what used to be Taco Bell and then Verizon, and the realtors will be on your left, and you head up toward the liquor store. So to me, that's important, because that's the side where you're asking for that setback variance, and it's not like there's a house or any resident or anything like that. Yeah, you're going to be closer to the line, but the Taco Bell use was closer to the line, and you have a legitimate purpose for asking for that, because now by doing that, you can have three stacking lanes. By the way, on the lanes issue, if you were only allowed to have two stacking lanes, would you still be interested in coming to the site?
We would, but it would, yes, we would. There would probably be some other changes that would have to be made, but generally, it would be a worse idea, or we would have worse answers to some of the, frankly, the concerns like that DiMarco brought up regarding queuing. Queuing is important for a lot of different reasons. The DOT, as we approach them for their review of this, they are very in tune with the Royal Now Go Car washes, and, you know, we have a whole chart showing how many queuing spots we have at all the other locations on state roads, and certainly now that we've been around for 10-plus years, there's a history of what works and what doesn't. And so we generally try to get as much queuing on the property as possible to appease the DOT, and obviously, their reasons are probably shared by this board and everybody else.
Well, that's what I was more concerned about, Dan, if you shrink, how many cars can go into this?
So there's stacking currently, in its current design, for 29 vehicles before the gates, and an additional nine from the gates into the wash. So roughly 38 cars can be on the property waiting to get washed before you start getting into a situation where you're getting close to Empire Boulevard, or, you know, to address DiMarco's concern, if the cars were to stack out into the cross-access drive to the south, which I don't think that'll ever happen, because most people are going to come from the road. But your question was, how many cars? 38? And I would say that is, in the, most of our washes have between 33 and 35, I'd say, is the average. We have some that are over 40. We have some that are under 20. So, you know, for me, the magic number is like 25. 26 is where I feel comfortable that we're never going to create a problem on Empire Boulevard, which is, you know, ultimately, when I have to talk to the DOT, that's what they want to know.
What's your busiest time of week, let's say?
It varies, but I would, to just give you a simple answer, I would say on that sunny Saturday, you know, late morning, early afternoon is probably the peak.
And what would you, how many cars would you expect to be queued up at that time?
Again, I would expect it to be full, but when you get 20 cars on the lot, all of our washes are designed so that you can see the stacking lanes from the road, so that when you, before you actually make that right turn in, you can see clearly, and especially the line of sight on this property, that there is a long line. And while I think car washes are very important, most people would agree that it's not that important, and I'm not going to wait 20 minutes to get my car washed, I'll come back and do it some other time. So that's kind of the limiting factor. To answer your question, I would say 20. I would envision on that busiest Saturday, the stacking lanes would go to about the middle of the vac area, as shown.
And how would that change if there were only two stacking lanes?
It would go farther back. It would also self-police. I mean, I don't, you know, people don't sit there and count cars. They're going to see two long lines instead of three kind of long lines. So to your point, you know.
How many, what's the reduction in the queuing, is what I think Matt was asking? In other words, if you can do 35 today, if you go to two, what's the reduction?
If we did 38, we could probably get, we'll probably bring it down to like 29 total.
What is your question around stacking? Is it to reduce to two, meaning that you can bring the variance closer, so you don't need it so wide there, Dan? Is that what you're trying to get to?
That's one point, sure. If they move the car wash building south, so that their variance request is reduced, they're cutting into their queue lanes.
Correct. And we did explore that, but we felt that more stacking, you know, when we weighed the pros and cons, and we looked at who was next door and what the configuration of the lot to the north is, you know, again, we didn't feel that it was a big detriment to that lot. You know, other configurations, other sites, might be a different story. On this site, we didn't feel, we felt it was more important to have more cars in the stack than to eliminate 10 feet, you know, to add 10 feet more setback to the north.
So of all the locations that you've had, which one was the one that you had the biggest worry about stacking problems such that cars would end up on the main road?
So it would be our third location was in Grease, on Ridge Road across from Grease Mall, and we built that with two stacking lanes. I would say that property held about 24, 25 cars in those two lanes, maybe 22, 23. And there were a few times where the cars went out onto Ridge Road. And, you know, needless to say, both the town and the DOT, mainly the town, because they were the ones getting the call, were very concerned, and rightfully so. And so we immediately went in for approval to build a third lane, which required variances, and it was, you know, quickly granted. Now, obviously, their situation's different, because they'd already approved it. Oh, yeah, good. So this is showing two lanes. We added a third lane to the right, so now there are three lanes. So this picture was, Google Earth usually gives a date, but.
But before we added the third lane.
Yeah, this is before we added the third lane.
Do you have any sites, then, that currently have two stacking, or?
The only, we have two sites that have two lanes, the original on Monroe Avenue, Monroe and Clover. And we haven't really had many problems there. It's a, you know, it's a busy corner, and I think it self-polices pretty well, but I worry about that sometimes, but that works. And then on Jefferson Road, that site was only, I think, 80, it was an 80 --
Six feet wide.
60?
Yeah.
Wow. 60 feet wide by 300 feet long. 60 feet wide by 300 feet long, and we had to use smaller gutters because the gutters overhung the property line. So to give you, you had setback on that. So we won't have to use smaller gutters here, but...
Okay. So, do you typically, are there any employees onsite?
Yes, so we always have at least two employees onsite for safety. It's not open 24 hours, it's open generally from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, seven days a week. So there's always two employees on. On that busy Saturday that Mr. Piston was asking about, we would have six employees onsite.
And would any of them be equipped to handle a situation where cars started getting close to Empire, and if so, what would they do?
So on those busy days, one person is, is solely in charge of, they typically would station themselves at the exit of the wash to make sure cars keep moving along. And they would also by that stand vantage point be monitoring the stacking lanes. And so, they'll, they'll help pack cars in, come forward so we can fit more cars to keep the queue shorter, and, and if need be, and again, the only time I've ever had to do this was on Ridge Road in Greece, where employees would actually stand by the road and say, you can't stop on Ridge Road and wait, you got to keep going. And again, I don't think that would be a problem here either with two or three lanes, frankly, but, you know, it's, it's more probability with two than three. So I think that answered your question.
Yes, yes. Another question that I have, and this does concern the cross-access easement that goes behind the gas station into another part of Baytown. And it is addressed, and the concern is raised in the DiMarco letter. But what controls are there going to be in place to make sure that conflicts with the use of that, either, you know, because people make wrong turns, or maybe because they changed their mind once they pulled in and say, gee, you know, what do I, what do I do now? I've taken too long, I want to, I want to get out of here. That, that easement's there for a reason, and I guess asking another way is, what are you going to do to make sure that the purpose of that cross-easement isn't...
Compromised.
Abused, he said, you said compromised, I was thinking bastardized, but whatever, we all are saying the same thing by your use of this.
Yeah, I, we will, we would certainly be using it, which I think is its intent. I would envision if I were a customer at the car wash, a frequent user who wanted to exit the car wash and go south on Empire Boulevard, I would probably end up exiting the wash, and then turning left into the wash, and exiting the wash through that access point so that I could get to the traffic signal, because I would much rather make a left, and, and I'm, I would bet you, oh, there's a center of turning lane. It would be easier to make a left at the signal, especially if it was a busy day, than it is to go back to Empire Boulevard and make the left there, so... But, that being said, you know, 80% of the time, Empire Boulevard, while we, it is a busy street, but 80% of the time, you can make a left out of there relatively comfortably because when the light turns red, there's going to be gaps. So it'll be used. I know in their letter, they were concerned because if a garbage truck comes in off of Empire, or however it comes in and picks up the garbage, it might be easier for it to exit through that road than to make a turn back out to Empire Boulevard. And I don't necessarily disagree with that, I could see a garbage truck doing that, but I could also see the garbage truck making multiple stops in that area and needing to go pick up another dumpster that's in Baytown Plaza. So, I, I think it'll be used for what it's intended. I don't think it'll be a primary access point by any way means, you know, I don't think most people are going to get to the car wash that way. I think very few people will. And I think a few people will exit it to use the light to make a left, or, or if they're leaving the wash and wanting to shop somewhere in Baytown, which is also a possibility.
Or get gas, you know, that...
Or get gas.
Yeah, there's definitely, but there's very little chance that probably someone from Baytown is going to utilize the, the wash, car wash property to exit. You know, there's a, there's a major, you know, entrance and exit by Verizon, and then the major one south of the gas station. Those are the two main access points that, you know, 99.9% of people are going to use.
And if I'm not, I don't shop at that Baytown, but if I'm not mistaken, that, those are the backs.
Well, that's one of, one of the reasons they put that entrance to the plaza, just north of your proposed project, is so that the businesses, such as the liquor store and the Street of Shops a little further down, would experience more traffic flow into their location. So, I mean, Andy, is that your yellow cursor there?
It is.
You know, so you come in off of Empire and you're going to the liquor store. You know, let's just say it's me, for example, going to the liquor store.
It's the third time you've referenced liquor stores.
There's that parking lot there, but, you know, I, it's, there are a lot of different businesses in Baytown, and I think somebody, one of you two gentlemen earlier said, hey, one of our potential customers is going to be used as their Baytown Plaza. You park in that parking lot to go to the liquor store, now you want to go get your car washed. How, how are you going to get into the car wash queue? Or are you just going to say, I'll do it some other time? You can, you can, there are a bunch of different ways. That's right, that's one way to do it, is a potential stacking there. By the way, I, with, what Andy just, the path he just followed with his cursor, I, I've done that to get out to that light, as you guys were talking about. It's much easier to make a left-hand turn when there's a traffic light. Other than that, though, I will say there's not. That little L is used mostly for people getting out...
Right, and, and I would say to you that, yes, you may go to the liquor store and then come get your car washed doing that, but as a percentage of the cars that are entering and exiting the site, I would say it's going to be, I don't want to guess at a percentage, but very low, single digits.
Yeah, from the L, probably. I, I do see a lot of people coming, you know, a lower right-hand corner now, Andy, with the cursor, coming, coming from where, where Walmart used to be, past the Street of Shops, headed toward Empire, and taking a right to get into the car wash. I, I think you'll get a lot of traffic that way, so I'm concerned a little bit about people coming from Empire and people coming from behind the gas station. And I think he addresses that a little bit, he, Mr. Calucci addresses it a little bit in his letter sent on behalf of DiMarco as well.
Yeah.
So, you know, tell us a little bit about how that potential traffic conflict is not, not going to be a problem on those busy sunny Saturday afternoons.
Yeah, again, your, your question addresses what I was going to first say, is that most of the time, 98% of the time, it's not busy, even when it's a decent day, and so there won't be any issue. On that, those, that busy Saturday, or that handful of busy times where it's full and it's, it's really doing well, is there a possibility that two or three cars may stack out onto that common area? You know, I wouldn't say absolutely not, if, if the neighboring property owner has a real concern with that. I mean, frankly, we can do stuff like cone it off on those days. I mean, there's things we can do to mitigate it, to be a good neighbor. But on the other end, you know, I, it's not like, if, if we were blocking the main entrance, or if we were spilling out into the main thoroughfare that brings cars from Empire Boulevard into Baytown Plaza, then I would say that's unacceptable. You know, where it is right there, even if a couple cars were sticking out, which I, I would say is a bad, is, is not great either, but I don't even think it'll block cars from doing that, you know, zigzag out. I think there's enough room there, I think it's oversized for whatever reason, and there's plenty of room for a lot of stuff to go on there before anybody gets blocked.
Would the, I'm sorry, would the employee that would be monitoring Empire be equally able to monitor that and toss a cone there if he saw that situation start to build up?
Yeah, absolutely, and, and that's, that's what they're doing, they're monitoring the general traffic flow, you know, on several different... We, we have had municipalities have us install a gate, which, you know, it rarely ever gets used, and it's kind of pointless, but it, it brings psychological relief to some places where we have a gate that swings, and if it gets to a point where that's an issue, the employee goes out there, they swing the gate, and it just redirects people to either come back another time or find another way into the property. And, you know, when things slow down, they open the gate back up. And, and so, we would not be opposed, in an effort to be a good neighbor, some mitigation to that effect, I don't think it's necessary, but, you know, that's only my opinion.
And, and we do have other car washes, with, you know, for instance, you know, Clover in Route 31 have entrances from both roads that we have, in Cicero, we have two that have, you know, two separate roads that are coming in and joining, De Pue, West Seneca, there's a bunch of other washes that have that similar situation, Lancaster, that, you know, there's really not any issues with it.
Yeah.
So, you mentioned a couple times being a good neighbor, and we did get that letter today at 4:30. Have you had any conversations with DiMarco's about this project at all?
I have not. They, they are involved indirectly in a litigation against me.
Oh.
On a different matter, and so, there's, there's some stuff there.
Okay, I understand that. I just, I, I just, you know, representatives reaching out may not be a bad idea. The, I don't necessarily see from a zoning, consider variance standpoint, a direct relationship between the variance, variances you are requesting and this stacking issue individually. But, if we grant you these variances and then planning board approves, then you're going to be operating a car wash there, so in that sense, they're certainly connected. And, so I guess you could say it's an effect on neighboring properties, maybe that's a factor we would rely on. But I would, I definitely would feel a little bit more comfortable if there were an effort made to have some kind of communication. Putting a gate there, I'm not even sure that that, that you'd be allowed to do that by the terms of the cross-easement, I have no, I have no idea what it says. And maybe you could, maybe not, I, I just don't know. But, okay. All right, so let's just go quickly through some of these other ones. The green space, anybody have any questions on that? I, it's, it's pretty much the same as it is now. The parking, not, you don't, I know we asked you about the number that you're asking for is going to include the vacuums, but if you have every vacuum space being used and you have six employees, that's 14 spots?
Yeah, that still leaves two for anyone to pull in.
Okay.
So, I'd like to have a question on those lines. Realistically, how often do you have somebody park and go into the building? That was another concern that was in the letter. My question is, is that, is that two an hour, three an hour? How often do you actually have somebody pull in and go into the office?
I, I would say on average, one an hour.
Okay. And as to buy tickets or...
That's usually, you broke my windshield wiper, which of course rarely if ever happens, or, you know, I, I have the sticker on my windshield that doesn't seem to be working. And frankly, a lot of those concerns are actually addressed on the slower days at the pay stations. When people pull up, the employee, you know, will assist them there. You know, we, we really need probably two to three spots for customers. And we do use, you know, a lot of times customers will park in the vacuum area and walk into the office if they need something, because they might be doing both. So, while, while they are vacuum spots, we do consider them parking spots, and I'm sure you noticed, but those parking spots for the vacuums are 12 feet wide. So again, you know, could we fit more parking spots? Yes, practically, it's better to have a 12-foot wide spot when you have people opening doors and walking around their cars, it just makes more sense, but there's still parking spots.
And, and you're not selling anything here, like a grocery store?
Absolutely not. The only thing we sell is the car wash, and there's, the vacuums are free, and we don't sell anything in the office, no, you know...
Yeah. And, and your stacking, by the way, goes from three to one. Do you have like the pre-wash thing that people drive through, or it goes right into the car wash?
Goes right into the car wash.
Nobody spraying hoses or anything?
They spray the hoses in the wash for the most part, sometimes right outside of the wash on a nice day.
All right. All right, so then the signs, you're asking for two building and one freestanding, so that's really one more than you're entitled to. However, there are a lot of buildings in that area that have more than one building mounted, even with a freestanding sign. We've granted variances there before.
That secondary sign on the building is actually aligned with, pretty closely, so it would allow for people coming from the plaza to be able to see, okay?
Correct, to the south.
Yeah, and one of the reasons we've granted sign variances in this location is because even with all the traffic lights, people do tend to drive pretty fast on Empire Boulevard, and the car wash, as you've pointed out, is more or less...
Impulse.
Impulse, which means maybe you're hitting your brakes a little bit, that sort of thing. So signage I, I see as being important. The variance, the same thing you did a good job of pointing out, that there's a lot of freestanding signs closer into the setback or right-of-way or road, whatever it is. So I really don't see much difference between your requests and other requests that have been granted all along. Let me just ask, is there anything else in the DiMarco letter that you want to address tonight?
And again, obviously, we, we will take a closer look at it, and, and we will reach out to them, but as, in my review, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I think you read it a little more thoroughly, that their four main points were queuing, which we discussed, parking, which we discussed, the pavement, the pavement setback, and building setback, which we've discussed, and then I thought somewhere...
Cross-access.
Oh, cross-access.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the big one with, with, that...
Yeah.
Communication with, between you and them may, you know, result in some common ground, I don't know, and, you know...
Yeah, I, I will reach out, that's the right thing to do, we will reach out to them.
When is your next planning board date?
That's a great question. See if it's on my calendar.
26, there's a work session on the 26.
All right, well, I ask that just because I'm probably going to make a motion to table to give you the opportunity to have that conversation, which means you'll be back on our agenda February, whatever the date is. And in the meantime, you'll be able to go back to planning board, and we'll ask for comments soon, but I think for the most part, what we've heard and talked about today, you've get, you've given a good presentation, and you've, you've made a pretty good case of your request for variances. So, I don't see any call-ins or anybody submitting electronic comments, but someone will correct me, it wouldn't be the first time that's happened. But if anybody at home wants to call, 340-8771 with a comment, a question, please do so. In the meantime, I'll ask if there's anybody in the audience that cares to speak about this application. No, okay, I don't want to cut you guys off. Any other questions on any of these issues?
I had just one question, it's somewhat cursory because of the pass-through. Those of us that go in and out of car washes do know the rate at which the roads and roadways do begin to kind of fall apart. Is that being part of the planning board discussion for the, the pass-through? More so from the, the shared?
Oh, you, you mean as far as maintenance?
Yes.
In the shared access area. I believe there is a maintenance agreement by which we are responsible for, I don't remember what the percentage is, but DiMarco would send us a bill for X percentage of the maintenance, it's plowing, salting, et cetera, and I'm assuming some replacement and repairs, so we would obviously be obligated as the owner of the property to abide by that agreement.
Yeah, there is a note here that says at a minimum, the applicant should share in the costs of maintaining the common drives of the plaza.
Yep.
I don't know if that's on financial or legal terms, or just moralistic, but I'll leave that, I'll leave that to you.
That was my only question, Dan.
Yeah, okay, so, thank you for the presentation, we don't have any comments, so I, I know that we will, will hold off on secret, but I'll make a motion to table to give the applicant a fairer and more thorough time to respond to this, if you see fit, but also perhaps to have some sort of communication with the DiMarco group.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion to table in a second, and by the way, that'll... And by the way, that'll be addressed at our work session. So it's probably, those other two will probably be tabled again, and you guys will probably be the first things right at 6 o'clock next time. All right, a motion to table in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you for the thorough application.
Thank you, Board members and Mr. Chairman.
February 16th.
Thanks, guys. That was good work. I know it took a little longer, but good job.
Roger Langer, Greater Living Architecture, 3033 Brighton Henrietta Town Line Road, Rochester, New York, 14623. On behalf of Joshua and Olivia Jones, request approval for area variances under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow an existing residence and proposed additions with less setback than required under Section 250-5.1-F1 of the code at 2094 Baird Road. The property is currently or formerly owned by Joshua Jones and Olivia Klein, and is zoned R-1-20, SPL number 139.07-2-9.12. This is application number 23Z-0002.
All right. Hello, and if we could have your names and addresses, and then we'll get into the application.
Roger Langer, Greater Living Architecture, 3033 Brighton Henrietta Town Line Road.
I'm Joshua Jones, 2094 Baird Road.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks, guys. Looks like you guys are putting addition, basically remodeling your entire home, or on Baird Road there. It's an older home, from what I can tell, 1800s home, and the road has probably become wider ever since the home was built. And I believe there's also a home across the street that's probably in a similar state where that home has also been closer to the road as well. So, in terms of the area, it's probably a common occurrence that we see in some of these older areas where the roads have gotten wider. But it looks like you're looking at a setback for a front porch you want to put on. And then also, primarily, the side also has some of a setback as well. And you're also putting an addition on the rear of the home, and probably a tiny piece that is slightly still going to require a slight variance. But primarily because the entire home is built within the setback. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So really, anything you did to this home, minus, I think, a little small corner of the home, would require some kind of variance for anything?
That is absolutely correct.
Okay. Tell us a little bit about the plans and how you decided where to put the additions and what to push out and where, you know, in a sense, you're looking to push forward. Were there other alternatives you could do at the front entrance where it wouldn't require you to move forward with as much of a variance?
There really are no other alternatives, but I'll walk you through the plan.
Please.
First of all, the existing kitchen was an addition onto the original structure, and that foundation is deteriorated. Therefore, it needs to come down so that it's irreparable.
Okay.
So, that kitchen needs to come off, plus it was small to begin with. They're an active entertaining family and needed a larger kitchen. So, the Joneses very much like the village feel of their location. The character of the home, they've done some interior remodeling already to highlight the post and beam construction. The house was built around 1840, so it has a lot of character. They want to keep that character, actually improve on the front so that they could put a front porch on, again, enjoying the village feel of the neighborhood and being able to sit out on the front porch. As you stated, 99% of this house is currently over the front setback line.
Right.
So, any front porch obviously would be in the setback requirement.
Right.
The garage, we put on the more public side of the house, like where the kitchen is going, and a new mudroom so that there's, you know, the kids come home from school, they've got a location to come in. The, today, what's called the drop zone. And that, we pushed that portion of the house as far back as we could from the street. And then, the width of the garage is less than 22 feet clear inside. That's why the garage encroaches on the side setback, which the adjacent neighbor, that's their rear yard, so it's really nowhere near their existing structure. It's not like we're cramming it right up against somebody's living room or bedroom or something like that. It's a, it's a clear, open backyard.
And in terms of garages, I guess by today's standard, that's probably a narrower garage than would typically be found in most construction nowadays, correct?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
It is a little bit deeper, but that really doesn't affect either the side or the front setback. It's deeper so that, you know, you can put a snow blower and some other tools and things like that in the garage area.
Okay. In comparison, there's that front overhang right now on the front of the house. How much farther from that will the porch extend beyond that? Because I think right now, you know, the setback's looking at the front of the house as our distance marketing, you know, is it going to be, you know, we're looking at like four more feet than that approximately?
I believe it's five feet now, and our front porch is eight feet.
Okay. So you're really looking at three foot. There's already bushes out, so from someone coming by, they're not going to see a dramatically, you know, it's not going to be sticking out dramatically farther compared to what's already in the area with the bushes and the, and the front step or, you know, the overhang already.
Correct.
Okay. In terms of the fronts, lighting and things like that sticking off the front of the porch, will there be anything beyond that, or it'll be kept in against the house?
No, it'll be either recessed or ceiling-mounted, or it would be a sconce on the wall adjacent to the door.
You spoke about the front of the home, I guess, settling or sagging. Is that primarily just from the old construction? Is that from lack of protection from rain at the front entry, or is it a little bit of everything, or?
I believe it's mostly the old construction. I don't, don't believe they did inadequate foundation underneath it.
With a larger footprint of the building, addressing things like water runoff and things like that, will that be addressed? Because there'd probably be an increased amount of roof coverage for now rains coming out?
There certainly will. All the roof drainage will be collected, and we'll make sure that it doesn't spill over onto any neighboring properties.
Okay.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Josh. I believe it slopes from front to back right now, your site.
We're uphill just a little bit, so from the front of the structure to the road slopes down, and from the rear of the house into the backyard slopes down.
Okay. And then, as I said, I think before, it's not out of character for years. I think there's also a home on the corner of Baird and Penfield Road there that also is quite close to the area in terms of this setup. So they're also quite close, so, you know, and since, within two or three homes, there's several homes that are going to face this at some point if they ever go to look to do additions. There you go. That's quite close right there already.
Yeah, and even right here at Atlantic and Jackson.
Yeah.
There's two houses right on that corner that.
Correct.
Are real close to the road.
Correct. Those are the questions I have.
Okay, before we ask other Board members to chime in, I'll just remind folks at home, if they would like to comment, they can call 340-8771, or send in a comment or question through the website, penfield.org. Any other questions from the Board?
I have one.
Okay.
The neighbor that would be impacted, whose backyard drew up, have you spoken to that neighbor?
Well, yeah, we speak regularly.
What he means about this application, that's a good response and a fair one.
About this particular build, and do they express any concerns?
To know this neighbor, it would, yeah, he has no concerns. He's a very lax individual.
What's the, I'm just curious, what's the square footage add to the house?
Approximately 17.
Yeah.
That's so exciting.
I believe it's on one of the drawings. See, yeah, the existing first floor is 764 square feet. The first floor addition is 710, and that garage portion is about 1,000.
And I assume you're tearing down the other garage? It looks like it from this photo.
There is, oh, that, that's the new design, if that's what you're looking at. There is no existing.
There was a storage shed.
This is a burning back.
A separate, oh, I thought that was like a separate garage.
No, that's setback.
Yeah, that's, that would stay.
That's going to stay there.
Okay, anybody in the audience care to speak about this application? All right. Again, I don't see anybody waiting on the phone or having submitted an electronic, so we can proceed with, start with the environmental.
Okay. This is a type-two action pursuant to seeker, requiring no further review.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Andres to declare it a type-two action under seeker, and a second by George. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then I'm going to move to approve. In terms of undesirable changes to the character, we spoke that there's, you know, several homes already that are in the same situation. The home's going to be, you know, made nicer, it's going to look safer, or it's going to be safer, it's going to look nicer in terms of, you know, the concerns about the foundations and things like that. It'll definitely be an improvement for safety as well. Could there be a benefit achieved some other way? I guess if they picked up the whole entire house and moved it back and then put an addition on, they wouldn't require variances, but really, everything that has to be done right now requires some kind of variance for the site. Environmental-wise, they're going to take care of any kind of stormwater issues that might occur with these, with these additions, and it's self-created, but most of these are.
Okay. So, we have a motion to approve for the reasons stated by Andres. I'll second that. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
You're not going to wait for me to ask for the next application?
Would you like me to proceed?
No, you're, you're fine. What am I going to do now?
Brian Beard, EC Barton and Company, 2929 Browns Lane, Jonesboro, Arkansas, 72403. Request approval for a special permit for signage under Section 250-10.3-A of the code to allow a second building-mounted sign whereas a maximum of one building-mounted sign is allowed under Section 250-10.13-C of the code at 1800 Empire Boulevard. The property is currently or formerly owned by EC Barton and Company and is owned general business, SPL number 093.15-1-57.2. This is application number 23Z-0003.
Hello.
Hi. Good evening.
So, Brian is not here today. I'm with the sign company that represents Barton's and all of their sign projects. My name's Chris White, and I work for Adart Sign Company, and we're based out in Dallas.
Okay.
And my name is Bob Warham, the Regional Vice President for EC Barton and Company, and I live locally in Churchville.
Great. Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. So, tell us the reason that you need the second sign.
So, pretty simply, with the construction that's come up on the property with the new Taco Bell, the visibility of the building and even the signage that faces Empire is really, the building's not visible all that well. So people driving in that area either have to know where that building is or where they're going. So if you're driving south down Empire, you really don't even know that building is coming up until you're almost past it. And then also, driving on Creek Street, there is going to be a pylon that's going to be added in time, but currently, there's no visibility for that building, or no signage on that building on that street.
So where is the, there's a current sign there now. Where is the current sign?
It is currently on the side of the building that faces Empire.
Okay, and where would the proposed second sign go?
Essentially, just around the corner, and we showed on, that's where the current one is.
Yeah, okay.
And then our layout that's provided shows where the proposed sign's going to go.
Can you just describe where it would go?
It's facing, going to be facing Taco Bell.
Yeah, it's going to be facing Taco Bell.
Okay. And, and you're not looking for a bigger sign, so both of these signs combined are still within what the code permits, correct?
Correct.
So could you make the first sign larger? And would that be able to achieve the purpose that you're looking for?
I'll answer, and then Bob, you can. I don't think it will, because, one, we're really looking to get the visibility for the folks that are traveling in for the Taco Bell, but also from the two directions that I mentioned before.
The other challenge with the building and the front of the sign is there's power coming into the building just to the left of it. So to get it, to make it any bigger, it'd be very, very challenging.
The second sign, would you be able to see it from Creek Street?
If it's, if it's where we show it, no, you probably don't get a ton of visibility until you're kind of close to the entrance.
Certainly, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Matt, but I, you're not going to be able to see it at all if you're headed north on Creek Street, I guess.
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
You'll see the pylon, hopefully, but you're not going to see that.
I think the biggest reason for the sign is that building is 110, front edge on Empire, and then 180 feet long facing Taco Bell, and that 180 feet has no signage at all. So, once someone pulls into Taco Bell, which is thought processes that we're going to see a lot of customers coming into the Taco Bell, you pull in and you won't know what that building is. You see an entrance, you see an exit, you see a canopy, and you have no signage.
Sorry, Matt.
No, I have nothing else.
All right. Any other questions from the Board? No? I have two monitors and two.
Mice.
Mice. Of course, I always grab the wrong one. In any event, you guys really don't care about that. I don't see any phone-ins or email responses. One thing I'll say about this is, when I first saw this application was in, I'm like, oh, man, these guys, you know, why didn't they come in before when Taco Bell came in and they had the shares signed? But, I hear you guys say, hey, now we see Taco Bell going up, and to me, that's a very legitimate point.
Yeah.
You know, that Creek Street is busy, but I live right around the corner from there, and you're going to get a lot of people, to me, coming in off of Creek Street, taking a left into that, aren't going to be able to even see the second sign. So, I say that because I think two signs are necessary, even with that pylon sign.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, so, in any event, that's my two cents. So, anybody in the audience care to speak about this? All right, so let's go to the environmental.
I'd make a motion to declare this an unlisted action, requiring no further review.
I'll second.
Or a negative declaration? Unlisted action?
Yes, that's what I meant. To declare an unlisted action with a negative declaration.
Are you still going to second that?
I think so.
All right. And so therefore, on the seeker, Matt's made a motion to declare it an unlisted action and further to declare a negative declaration. Andres has seconded that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
On the merits, I'd make a motion to approve it. It's, there's, it's still, what, 27% less than they would be permitted per code. You made the point, Dan, about, about Taco Bell and being able to see it, and frankly, aesthetically, I mean, we don't want a ton of signs in this town, but it is a really, really long stretch of building where they're looking, and to have something to identify what it is to the public, I think it makes sense. It's in harmony with everything else in the neighborhood. It's not detrimental. It's not going to create a hazard. It's not going to interfere with anything, and it is necessary to adequately identify the business. So I would make a motion to approve this application.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Matt, second by Laura. What I'll add is a little bit of kudos to my fellow Board members here and our wonderful staff is, if you go back a couple, three years and you see all of the applications we've had on this little bit of land, and even on the other side of Creek Street with the church, I think this board and staff have done a heck of a job. I'll give a little credit to the Planning Board. we've had on this little bit of land, and even on the other side of Creek Street with the church, I think this board and staff have done a heck of a jo...I'll give a little credit to the planning board. Done a heck of a job with this area, and it's, you know, even if you're not a fast-food fan, these are gonna be good, thriving businesses that are good for the community, and I think, you know, hats off to you guys for doing a good job, and I think this is just another example.
And it sure looks nicer than the head...the whole area looks nicer than that.
I mean, how long did M&amp;T buildings sit vacant?
Long time.
Right?
Long time.
Yeah, so, okay, we have a motion to approve in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, guys.
Valerie Poprosuk. I hope I said that right. 60 Hampstead Drive, Webster, New York, 14580. Request approval for area variances under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow an accessory storage building that is larger than allowed under Section 250-5.1-F12A of the code with less setback than required under Section 250-5.1-F12B of the code and taller than allowed under Section 250-5.1-F12C of the code at 60 Hampstead Drive. The property is currently or formerly owned by Valerie Poprosuk and is zoned RR-1. SBL number 094.04-1-76. This is application number 23Z-0004.
Okay, we have your names and addresses.
Valerie Poprosuk, 60 Hampstead Drive, Webster, or Penfield.
I am Ina Poprosuk, also at 60 Hampstead Drive.
Okay.
Excellent. Well, first, let me say that excellent write-ups and the application was very thorough, so that's always appreciated, so thank you for that to start off. So, you're looking to add an outbuilding on your property to allow for a storage, as I understand it, of an RV, a boat, and four ATVs for the kids?
We have five kids.
Sorry, five, excuse me, five ATVs.
Constantly adding.
Didn't want to leave anybody out. Could you kind of walk us through a little bit, your thought process and the need for the building?
Well, we do have a large RV-style van, because we travel a lot with the kids, and we don't want to leave it out on the driveway to store, like, when we're not using it. In winter, we don't really travel that much with the kids being in school. Don't want it to, you know, disrupt the look of the neighborhood, this bulky thing kind of sitting out on the driveway. We want to store it in this building. We also have a boat that we use in the summer. Also would like not to store it in the driveway somewhere out of sight. The kids were very active. The kids all have four-wheelers, they all have dirt bikes, tons of bikes, all sorts of equipment, and then we figure as they're gonna start growing up, they're all gonna have cars, we kind of need room for that. We don't have...we won't have a lot of room in our three-car garage to store any extra cars, to park for the winter, and that sort of thing.
Understood. So, there are quite a few variances, so I'd kind of like to walk them through individually, if we could, and talk a little bit. So, we'll start, for me, which is the most obvious, the overall size of the structure. You've given us some indication as to the need, but if I were to ask you, would it be possible to scale the size of the overall structure down to a more...a level more keeping with what's allowed for the property? Is that...would that still meet the needs, at least to the most part, for what you have?
It's never enough room. It's always...the RV is over 40 feet, and same thing with the boat, so we kind of need the space.
I understand, but still, overall size, if you were to scale it back to allow for the 40 feet in length, so let's say 40 by 40 versus 40 by 80, is that what it currently is?
60.
Yeah, so if you could, you know, reduce it enough to say lower it 20%, that would still allow for both of those as well as a significant number of vehicles?
I would say 40 by 50 would be okay, because the RV's 40-foot, it'll be really tight. If you put it in, you won't be able to go around it.
Gotcha, but there is some ability to scale down a small percentage. Okay, my second question would be around the roof line and the overall height. Is there a reason that it needs to be that high? I know the center, I can see the center driveway, which I'm assuming the center garage doors for that RV would be the tallest. Any reason that you couldn't reduce the overall pitch of the roof in order to be able to bring down the height?
Well, we don't want it to look kind of dinky. We want it kind of to match the house, and we have room up there also for, like, storage or the kids having a playroom or something on the second, in the attic area.
So, your intention is to use the...use an upper area for an additional living space?
I don't know about living space.
No.
If it's gonna be a playroom, then it's gonna have...so, Andy...
Treehouse-type.
Okay, would you be running power and water and whatnot out to the building?
Yes.
All right, so this is sounding a little bit less to me, Dan, like an outbuilding. I'm gonna actually ask if you wouldn't mind stepping in here from an experience standpoint, because there's a lot more going on here than just a building to store equipment.
Yeah, well, so let me just ask Andy, the fact that there is going to be this space on top of the garage, let's say, and, you know, if they're gonna use it for a play area or a romper room or whatever, is that...does that have any other implications from a code or permit standpoint? And if you want to look into it, that's fine as well. I don't...we're hearing it sort of, I think, for the first time, so...
I would say...
I want to make sure we get things right.
Yes, correct.
I would say if it was specifically...the purpose was specifically for some type of recreational use, you're probably getting close to crossing the line. It's supposed to be limited to storage.
Not considered living space, it'd be storage, and, you know, kids, they want the...they all want to put their stuff somewhere, they want to maybe hang out there or something. It's not gonna be like living space or anything.
And I wouldn't say that because it's a storage building that you couldn't spend time out there doing things in there, but...
Okay, and storage it is.
If you're getting more towards a recreational space for the kids, that's kind of getting close to...
Different rules apply when...nobody's saying that anybody's gonna sleep there, but if they're sitting around playing cards, or if you have electricity and there's a TV and they're watching TV, different rules apply, as they should, to areas where people are gonna be hanging out and spending time as opposed to you're in there because you're working on something that's being stored there or you're moving stuff around. And that's just to let you know. You're entitled to ask for permission to use it, whatever way you see fit, and of course, we have to consider your request and make a ruling on it.
Yeah.
I don't want you to say, we don't want to do that just for the sake of appeasing us, so...
It's basically gonna be lights, and I think we'd want a sink in there somewhere on the...so you can wash your hands or if you're working on something, and that's basically...
So, the question in that regard, and George actually was getting into it, is if you...if that space is going to be used for that purpose as much or more so than a storage purpose, and that use contributes to the need for the building to be that tall, you know, then it is a factor on your variance request. In other words, if you were gonna say, hey, we need this height strictly for storage because we have an RV and we have ATVs and everything else, then we would ask, okay, if you're just gonna store the vehicles there and the other equipment, why does it have to be so high? And he did ask, and part of the answer was, well, because, you know, we want to have this recreational area there too, so if you didn't have the recreational area, but maybe it was more of a cleanup area with some water and a sink, would it's...would you still need it? Need it as opposed to want it? Would you still need it to be as high as it is and therefore have that request? And again, if you want to take time to think about it, you'll have the time, because this is just kind of coming up now. I don't want to rush you into any answer here, and we'll take whatever answer you give and we'll debate it. So, don't feel any undue pressure, that's not our intent.
It'd be nice to have it.
Yeah, I think we just wanted to utilize that space for storage or whatever, if we were able to.
Otherwise, it's just trusses and a little bit lower and...
Yeah.
Yeah, that's...
Yeah.
Just a lot of wasted space you can...
Well, so if nobody ever went up in that space, let me ask it this way, if nobody ever walked into the space with the trusses and such, does it have to be that high?
Well, we kind of...all the, like, all the garages or all the storage units, they're all so low, and they don't look good to me.
Well, that's...so, there's a different reason, you know, you want it to look nice, which who doesn't, so, okay.
Our whole house is brick and stone, that looks nice in the front, and you're gonna see the garage on the side, you don't want it to be all kind of dinky, you know? We want to match the house.
So, in other words, the height that you're requesting makes it more...
In character with the neighborhood.
And with the house?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so there's a separate reason to have it that...
Yes, so I did have a chance to drive out, take a look, and so there is...two houses down there is another residence that does have a...it appears to be like a pool house, but it is certainly height-wise not as excessive as...and as large as this is. So, that's the reason I'm asking the question. There is certainly another sample in the neighborhood that they obviously took time to have it match the property. I can see that. And while I get where you're going with that, I still think that if you...if the upper area wasn't necessary, we could, along with reducing the overall size to the 40-50 that we talked about, if you could lower the height, that reduces the number of exceptions that we'd have to...we would have to consider. So, that's why I'm asking you if that was feasible, if that was something that you guys would consider as well. And then the next point I have is that there is a mention in the letter of a driveway that's leveraging some fairly new technology. I had a chance to go out, so I appreciate that, by the way, because I had to go learn myself exactly what it was and how it was installed. It's not considered as impermeable as a normal driveway, but because of the crushed-stone base and things like that, there is some level of...the water runoff is a little bit different. So, my question is, that's a fairly lengthy...are you coming off your current driveway on that, or are you talking about another cutout and...
So, will you see where that grass is or that, when we were finishing the backyard, that road over there?
The construction road, yeah.
Yeah, the construction road. So, basically, you get this plastic grid, and then you plant the grass in there, so it's all grass, you don't see nothing in there, and it makes it drivable.
Yeah, but you have to put crushed stone before you put down the...I mean, I did take a look at it. It's a fairly extensive process, and that's...what you're talking about putting in is a fairly long stretch of that, so I guess my question would be is, is there...do we know what the impact of that would be overall to runoff and water? Has that been looked at, Andy?
Nothing changes. Not yet, not as far as the town...town has not done any review of it. The thing is with typically one curb cut is allowed per property, this would be a...it looks like a second driveway?
It's grass air...it'll be completely grass, but you could drive on it. It's not a driveway. It will be...so, whenever you want to park a boat or whatever, you want to park back there, you just...it's grass, but even if it's wet out, you can drive on it and it won't screw up your lawn. That's what it basically...
Yeah, I mean, the question was, is that you currently have a curb cut for your driveway. Would this also require a curb cut? Are you talking about a curb cut to at least for the entrance to the street to get onto that surface that you're putting in? Or would you come off of your current driveway so it wouldn't require another cutout?
No, it'd be where it is off the road.
So, that would be another curb cut, then, it sounds like, Andy?
Yeah, that would require, and I think I...we had a discussion about that, town board review and approval, and also a permit from our Department of Public Works.
Yeah, and then my other question along that driveway is that there is...there's several, it looks like RG&E boxes or whatnot that's pretty close. Has there been a conversation as far as putting something like even that type of driveway close...as close to that infrastructure as well?
That is something that I think DPW would review.
Gotcha, okay. Any reason I bring it up is because I did see it, so, okay. I don't have any other questions on the driveway, other than it would be nice to, A, see the driveway clearly delineated on the plan the building is, but the driveway is not. So, if we could actually see what that's going to look like on the plan, that would be, I think, beneficial, and we want to make sure that we're not...there's a...through the center, you see the dotted line there? That's the area they can't build because of the...was it the...
There's a conservation easement.
Conservation, yeah.
Area here.
Gotcha, so just want to make sure that there's no impact. It doesn't look like there'd be an impact on that, okay. So, is it possible to get a rendering with the driveway included?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know if it's considered a driveway if it's grass.
Okay, so let's break this down. You are gonna have to...you're gonna have to remove the current sod, you're gonna have to put down crushed stone, you're gonna have to put down the...there's a lattice work that you put down, and then you put down earth and grass seed, so there is a fairly significant amount of work, and it's not just...I mean, I've gone out and researched...
I guess I'd leave it up to town staff.
Yeah, I mean, what you're saying is all true, but do all those factors make it a driveway? If we need to give an opinion on that, then let's get an opinion on that.
And point is grass, you don't even see it.
Sounds very similar to the way you do drainage. Determination, Department of Public Works.
Because that's very similar if you do drainage, too.
And the reason that that question isn't...is important, or a reason it's important, is because if it...I suppose if a determination is made that it's not a driveway because it's grass, then there's not the need for the curb cut?
That's what I'm saying.
Well, but somebody first has to say it's not a driveway.
Yeah, if DPW does not consider it to be a driveway, then it wouldn't...I don't think it would be subject to the same requirement.
Right, so we have to find out exactly what the requirements are in that regard. But, you know, can you pull up the photo again there, Andy? Something I'd ask you about that is, and you already said, oh, you know, you don't want to come into that area off of your driveway. Well, why can't you?
Landscaping.
There's landscaping, mailbox.
Well...
I mean, you could, if you moved the landscaping.
What I'm wondering is, if you did make a cut off of your driveway, doesn't that avoid the whole issue of whether or not he needs a curb cut onto the road?
Yes, it would.
Now, that might cost you money, and you might have to move landscaping, but it's just...you know, it's something for you to think about. In fact, what is that, a little behind the mailbox?
Yeah.
It almost looks like there's a little...
Take out some bushes and that's it.
Yeah, but I'm not telling you what to do, it's just...it seems like it's an option if the driveway curb cut issue is going to be a problem.
We could just do that, remove the bushes and problem solved.
Yeah, that does lead me to my last question. Because of the location of this, have you had a chance to talk to the neighbor on that side? What's their take on having a second driveway or non-driveway, pardon me, that close to their property line?
He actually is happy about it because this area is always kind of wet most of the year, except the summer and the fall time, so whenever he works on his pool or anything in the backyard, he comes in through here too. So, if there's any tree guys cleaning up the trees or something, so he's happy with it, that it's gonna be a surface that you can drive over without screwing up the grass.
Gotcha, so as a good neighbor, you're gonna allow him access to use that as well? Got it, okay.
I'm sorry.
No, go right ahead.
Do you hear, is the agreement that you just cited, is that...is there an email or writing or anything? Would you be willing to put that in writing with him? That's, again, I'm not a requirement, but having that may make your case for having a curb cut if you go that route even better, so you might explore that, although that is, you know, I'm not your lawyer, but there are ways to do it where you can make it temporary, you can make it permanent, and it's worth talking about. If you think, hey, he's in favor of this application because we're gonna let him use this, then why not? Why not get a piece of paper that says that? Not that I don't trust what you're saying, but having something like that and being... But having something like that and being, knowing that more than one property owner can use it, you know, makes sense. And it would be good to have that in writing.
And then my final question is on the placement, location on the property. If you could bring that back up, Andy, as well. There's, the third variance is to the property line, and I'm assuming that the, the reason for that is because of the, the, the area where you can't build because of the flow through.
Yeah, and it's, it's all woods over there, so it'll give us a little bit more yard for the kids to play and, and, like you said, water area.
Yep, no, understood, understood. Just, just the, you know, if we, we often will recommend if you can move the placement a couple of feet in order to avoid the additional exception, we always ask if that's a possibility. In this case, I can see based on the size of the building and, and other objectives, you wouldn't be able to do it. So those are my questions. Dan?
Okay, before we ask other board members, let's remind folks that if they want to comment on the phone, they can call 340-8771 or they can submit a comment electronically. It looks like, it looks like so far, thanks for the reminder. It looks like nobody submitted any. Oh, wait a minute. We do have an anonymous comment. Isn't that something? I spoke too soon. Let me just make sure there's no, nobody waiting on phone, but we do, we have a a comment that says, "This property has been under construction since 2019, 2020. There is a constant incoming of construction vehicles, massive delivery trucks, and large amounts of debris. I recommend that the board further investigate this property." That's what it says. There's no name or address along with it. So I've read it to you. What, do you want to respond to that in any manner?
We had a fire, what, in 2020?
2020, January 2020.
For a year, we couldn't do anything because the insurance was investigating. Our fireplace went up in flames and half of the house needed to be replaced. So for a full year, we couldn't do anything.
And it was COVID.
Then COVID hit. For another year, you couldn't do anything. Now we're just finishing up the house from the fire.
So the comment about that the property's been under construction since 2019, 2020, sounds like it's a fair comment, but you've given reasons for that. Okay, anybody else have any questions about that comment that's come in? All right. And anybody in the audience, or any other questions about the application generally?
I, I think we probably just need to recap because I'm, I'm a little confused where, where we are right now, especially with, with the, with, with the structure and how tall it's going to be and what they're looking for and...
So, so, okay, let's, let's do that before we invite anyone in the audience, which I don't, I'm not sure there is anybody anyway. But if I'm understanding correctly, on the size of the structure, George asked you if you'd be willing to reduce it, to reduce the, because we have, by the way, we are required by law to grant the minimum variance that would serve your legitimate purpose. So if you guys are willing to cut the size of the, of the building from 40 by 60 to 40 by 50, it seems like it would still sit, serve your purpose, and yet that variance request would be pretty substantially reduced.
Reduced, yep.
What would it be reduced to? I'm sorry, can you do the math?
Forty by fifty.
Like percentages?
She's looking a lot, Andy.
On that same point, if it goes from 40 to 50 and we take it from the back, could it also then go closer to where the easement line is for the conservation easement to then have a slightly more than five-foot setback? You follow what I'm saying? Because that's a slight triangle. So if we're bringing it away a little farther, could it get a little closer to that? So now instead of being five foot, maybe it's 10 foot or whatever happens to be, to now bring you more into code or closer to, you know, compliance with that. I guess that's...
Good point. So, so reducing the size helps with that request as well. So then the height? Matt, do you need?
I'm just wondering what they're, what they're, are they leaving it as is or are they looking to reduce that, given the comments that's all?
Yep.
We'd like to keep it to match the neighborhood, the house.
And I understand that point. I was just making sure that, because there are lots of questions, just.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, they, we, my note is they agreed to the reduction in the overall footprint, and I like what Andres said about moving it. That's actually a pretty good idea. I think that they made the point on the height, as long as you, you're clear that it's intended to be a storage unit and that, I think Andy was pretty, pretty specific, you don't want to cross the line, so to speak, because then it moves from one type of a structure to another, so.
Yeah, there's safety issues that come into play. I'm not an expert on it, but I, I think that it, you, you folks may be wise to come in and speak with Andy or whomever to make sure that you know if that's what you want and that's what your intent is, that you're doing, you know, complying with all the safety codes in that regard.
Now, one tough thing is the fact that if we're moving it closer, we don't still have numbers. Like, we don't have a number bill to say this is our variance at this point in terms of the side setback. If we're shrinking the length of it and it can come closer, we don't know what that actually is without putting on a map and saying, this is where I look at Andy and say.
We can, maybe we can plot out where the building's going to be located and then figure out more precisely where the, how far it is going to be from the property line.
Yeah, I, I think that would be a good idea. We'll probably look to put this on next month and have you have a chance to speak with Andy. I think generally speaking, again, speaking for you guys, you've given a good presentation. The board is comfortable with, especially given some of your flexibility tonight with this idea, without actually calling a vote. But for you to have that chance and make sure you know exactly what you're getting yourselves into, I think would be good for, for everybody.
And, and just for us specificity on...
Yeah.
But we need to be able to say it's, it's this many feet, unless we really can't grant a variance.
Because one of the things that you should be aware of is if a variance is, is granted, any of them, and it says, you know, 10 feet, if that's wrong for whatever reason, because we didn't measure properly or we didn't sit down, it could affect your ability to sell the property or the, you know, the potential buyer. So we should, we should make sure we get things right in that regard as well.
Agreed.
All right, anybody in the audience care to speak about this? All right.
So I think it, I think I put a motion to, to table till next month and give them an opportunity to have an adjusted plan. And I, I would still like to request that even though it's a non-driveway, that it was at least indicated on the drawing as to where it would, would be.
Yeah.
And during that time, they could meet with DPW and see if it's actually...
Decide whether they want the curb cut or come in that way on it, and maybe talk with your neighbor about getting something in writing in that regard.
And if it's even a driveway.
Right.
And if it's even a driveway, yeah, because, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So, all right, so we have a motion
I'll second.
to table, excuse me, for those various reasons. And a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So next month, and we'll, we'll take your matters up right at 6 o'clock, probably either right before or right after the car wash one. So, but you don't have to wait for the public hearings. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Let's see. Christian Gaskin, Gaskon? Gaskon?
You're fine, either way.
Sorry. 1640 Kennedy Road, Webster, New York, 14580. Request approval for an, for area variances under Section 250-14.3 of the code. Throw out an accessory storage building that is taller than allowed under Section 250-5.1-F12C of the code with less setback than required under Section 250-5.1-F12B of the code at 1640 Kennedy Road. The property is currently or formerly owned by Christian and Krista Gaskon and is zoned RA-2, SBL number 111.01-6, 6-6.212. This is application number 23Z-0005.
Christian Gaskin, 1640 Kennedy Road, Webster slash Penn Field, New York. I think I just got a lesson on how exactly to do this based on the first time I came forward.
There's some benefit to going.
Yeah, that was, I was like, man, and then I was like, are they calling me? Wait a minute. It's helpful, thank you.
Hi, Christian. Well, thanks for hanging out here. Last, but certainly we, we save the best for last.
There you go.
So if you can just maybe run through at a high level your request and what you're looking to do, we obviously have looked through your application, but I think it'd be good to start there.
Sure. So essentially, I manage properties, some of which up is in Sackits Harbor. So I purchased a fifth wheel to kind of cut some drive time off, and I think what few neighbors I have are probably sick of looking at it, and I just don't want to depreciate the asset anymore with some of those crazy storms we have. During that windstorm, that last one, I had some trim ripped off the thing. So, you know, that kind of prompted me to kind of kick this more in gear, but it's been a plan of ours. So, it's storage for a 43-foot-long fifth wheel, and then I have a dump trailer, a tractor, an aerial lift. I have a bunch of equipment. Most will fit if this is approved. Some of it I'll keep over at some other property that I own. So there's just not a lot of space over here. You know, this is a 10-acre lot. That borders on a 60-acre lot of my neighbors. And so, you know, I, I understand the concern, you know, first and foremost about the setback, if we want to start there. I need about 12 more feet. I border a huge field and it's, jeez, it's got to be at least 500 feet to my closest neighbor there. So I did check with him, Ace Rolle, he's fine with that. I was actually amazed the number of neighbors that came to me that I didn't even call that said, "Do you need us to go on your behalf?", which I thought was awesome. So, you know, Ace spoke up and gave his support. The neighbor's kitty cornered to me that I recently built a pole barn behind me, asked if they, you know, Kim and Scott, I'll butcher their last name. But they've got the vineyards kind of behind me there. And then my neighbor has a landscaping business, the small red roof pole barn there. Looks small, it's actually a good-sized barn. Mr. Cogden came a couple nights ago and said, "Hey, do you need me to come?" So I know neighbor-wise, I've got support for this. You know, the height, I don't know what I could really do about that. It's, it's a metal roof and I think the pitch is not extreme, given the size of the barn. You know, I, I wanted to add the, the cupolas because I think they aesthetically kind of add some value to the neighborhood, you know, the few people that may be able to see it from the road.
So the cupolas itself, those are six feet? Is that what that is?
I believe so, yeah.
How far, your height is seven feet too tall? Is that, am I reading that correct?
Yep, 27 versus 20.
Six of the seven feet are the decorative add-on to the building?
This is three by three for the cupolas?
I think, I think they're three foot, I calculated them as three foot six.
Oh, okay, sorry.
The height of the cupolas.
But so the point is still there. It's just not as, right, not, it's a matter of degree. You know, you got three little areas on the roof that make the variance more substantial. If those weren't there, the, and you've given a reason why you want them there because they look nice.
Sure.
It'd be like half the, so this is a, the height variance requirement is 37%. I'm loving this, Andy. The percentage is really helping. It's like my new favorite thing. 37% taller than what's allowed, but about half of that is related to the decorative design and...
So that would make it what percent?
I failed every math course I took, so.
With that, it's very much in character. It's very familiar with that road, very familiar is, you know, it's very rural feel to it. The overall height, though, is just in concert with the building size, which is within the allowable parameter. So you're not asking for a variance on the size because you're more than
Sure.
able to make a size that big. But the height is just part of that, it sounds like, as well.
Yep. I, I just wanted to add one thing, but I can wait.
No, go, keep going.
Oh, okay. There's, I, I kind of drove around. There are quite a few barns that are much taller than the house structures. I, I know, they were built, who only knows when. But I do feel like that kind of fits with the character of a rural kind of, you know, area.
With that, then, let's talk about the setback. So the setback that you need, why, where, why are you putting it where you've designed it to be? If you can just talk a little bit more about, is there any other place that you can put this on your property?
Sure. So cost perspective, I'm actually putting this, I don't, yeah, you can kind of see it from there, right at the end of my driveway.
Straight off your driveway?
You got it, yeah. And I've, I actually moved it a little bit more so this way, not only for the variance, but I, I kind of thought, you know, the more I can bring it over this way, the less I've got to kind of add blacktop or anything else to accommodate it.
No additional curb cut either?
Exactly, thank you.
No, that driveway is extremely long.
It is.
It's a very long driveway and, you know, to do anything different than that, I can certainly understand that. You, you obviously need more pavement if you're going to put that, I'm assuming that's your RV, is that what it is?
Yes, ma'am.
Right there, you can actually see it in the photo. Talk to me a little bit about lighting, you know, from that perspective. Is it
Yep.
going to have a lot or?
No. There'll be a couple lights, you know, sconces on the front. I don't think, I mean, the plan didn't call for any, and I don't anticipate any change orders, putting them in the soffit or anything like that. If anything facing the pool, I may add some additional lights under that porch, but nothing crazy, no Edith Joe signs or anything like that.
Actually, you mentioned Bruce, Mr. Cogden. Did he have a comment? Is he here? Yes, he is here.
Thank you for coming. Your son's a great...
Well, wait till, wait till he says so.
I, I didn't have any further questions.
Wouldn't it be Edith Christian?
Yeah, right, exactly. Well, Joe's down the road, so it's a joint venture.
Can you pull up the aerial photo again? So, oh, make it bigger, larger, whatever the word is.
Zoom in.
Closer?
Zoom in, yes, techno guys. So I'm trying to see what else is in, those, those two cars and an RV, what else?
Yeah, I don't know when that was taken, so I've got a classic land yacht, 63 Cadillac, that is like 24 feet long or something like that. I've got the tractor, a dump trailer. If you have Google Earth, that's like active right now. You might be able to see those things.
So all that stuff that we're going to, except for the cars, all going to go in the building?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's really, that's all that I, that I had. I don't see any phone calls, nor do I see any electronic comments. Any other questions from the board?
No.
Anyone in the audience care to speak about this?
That was Bruce Cogden. I own property to the west. There's so much land and space around. I have no property, but I mean, it's, it's just wide open and rural.
Mostly agricultural. His property is beautiful. Just wanted to say I have no problems at all.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, well, thanks for coming in. You're last, so you had to stick around, but we appreciate that.
It's enjoyable.
Super enjoyable. Any other questions?
Good, I would, I have to throw something out there. Just want to clarify that this, the code does not allow for the building to be used for storage of commercial vehicles and equipment.
Yep.
So it would be limited to your personal, private...
Yeah, everything's registered to me personally, sir. Yep, nothing through the business.
Okay.
And that actually be in the resolution, I'm sure, that, that prohibition. Okay, so let's proceed with the environmental seeker.
Yes, so I would make a motion that this is a type-two action pursuant to seeker.
I'll second that. Any further discussion on the seeker? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so I would move to approve. You know, I think we've talked about it's consistent with the character of the neighborhood. It, while it is a sizable request with regards to the height variance, we've talked about a lot of that is related to, just to make it more appealing within the character of the neighborhood. While this is something that is self-created, because of course you don't.
Yes, right.
Have to have it there. But based on the location, it's the most logical location, and that it's going to be a storage utility for personal use.
Yes.
All right, so that's a motion to approve.
I'll second.
And we have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, good work, great application.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, everybody.
Have a good night.
Yeah, you too.
And if I'm not mistaken, that was the last application.
That's it.
All right, so then we have a couple tabled matters to add to the tabled matters, and we'll be back in February, God willing. Thank you all. Good job, have a good night.
Night.